Okay.
Okay.
Seven.
Thank you. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Nash Town Council for March Tuesday, the second, to order. Let us please stand for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Again, we seek your wisdom in all the decisions that we make tonight, Father, for the citizens of Nashville. Amen.
Amen.
Our first item is to approve some minutes. So if you would look at the minutes, let's do it by each section. So first, the minutes for January the 27th, 2021, a special call minute, meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
There are no corrections. I move we accept them as presented.
Second, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 The second set of minutes is February the 2nd, 2021, special call minute meeting. There are no corrections. Did I hear a motion that we approved?
So late.
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. The next minutes are from February the 2nd, 2021, the regular meeting minutes. Are there any corrections?
No, but February 2nd or February 16th?
Second.
We just did second, right?
The 16 will be the next group. This is February the 2nd, regular meeting minutes.
I thought we just did.
The one special called meeting.
We did the one special and now it's the regular.
Okay, okay.
Are there any corrections to the regular meeting minutes?
Need to approve.
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. The last set of minutes for February the 16th, 2021, the regular meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
Move to be accepted.
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Our next item is the board appointment. So at this time, I will turn it over to our library director, Tequila Austin, to present this to us.
The library advisory board members soon met with Crisola Hamm on February 11, 2021, and agreed to submit her application to the town council for approval. Crisola Hamm is a library patron. She is a teacher at Nash County Public Schools. She is an active member of the community. She volunteers as crisis advocate for my sister's house, and she has also volunteered for the United Methodist Ministries. I had the opportunity to meet Ms. Crisola Hamm. I'm trying to make sure I say her name correctly. I think I accidentally put a U in it. It should be C-H-R-I-S-O-L-A. We talked about it on the phone maybe like 30 minutes ago. So I do want to apologize for that because I understand the importance of that. But it's Crisola Hamm, and she is an active patron. She comes in, and so she does support the library. She has been eager. The last person that you appointed was Ms. Antonette, and Ms. Antonette recommended her. And Ms. Crisola would have been here tonight. I spoke to her, but she was not able to come, and I do apologize on behalf of her. But she was very eager to participate, see her in the library at all times. She asked, like, do I have anything for her to do? And, you know, could we help or whatever? That's what they'll come in and say. That's how I met her, through Ms. Antonette. And so they even, when I have programs, say, you know, are you doing programs for this weekend? If so, if you need us, let us know. So they're very active, both of them. And so this is how we met Ms. Hamm. I actually know Ms. Hamm from a different way as well. I actually was in Wilson, I believe it was Wilson Library, when I was a reference librarian, and I was teaching the career program there, and she sat in some of my classes. So this is not like I didn't know this person, and I found her to be a reliable person then and very well-respected in that community as well. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of her, and I know it's your choice, but I just wanted to just share my opinion about her.
Thank you. Do we need to take action on this?
We have to approve.
Do I hear a motion that we approve?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 So Ms. Hamm will be serving on our library advisory board, and we give her appreciation for doing that.
I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say that it's been very difficult with the COVID, and everybody was having to leave their term unexpectedly. But we only have one vacancy left, and we found someone. One of our library board members has found someone that is interested, and that would be our last appointment. So we'll have a pool for it.
Great, thank you. Next is our public comment period, and we have one person to speak tonight. And if he would come forward and give us his name, and if you would time him, you have three minutes to state your concern.
Thank you, Ms. Hamm. I live at 103 East Green Street, and I came before y'all last summer that we was having a lot of problems with people that were walking up through our properties, some of them asking for money. Well, I know that last summer, well, it was more in the fall, I had a gentleman that had apparently had been at my house before. I work in my yard a lot, and I leave my garage door open. And it was near dark, and I turned around, and there he was. He was there in my garage, and I confronted him. And he was wanting to know about a portrait that I had in the garage, if he could have it. And I wondered how and where did he know that that portrait was in there? And he knew exactly where it was at. So he had been in my garage before. Well, since then, it had quieted down, but my neighbor across the street from me on this last Friday, at 10 o'clock, he came over on Saturday to tell me that there was a woman. When they went to come up to the house at 10 o'clock that night, she said, I think somebody's sitting in our car. He says, I think you're right. So they went around the block, and they called the police department. And when they got there, sure enough, there was an individual in their car. And I guess she was apprehended out of the car, and she fell on the ground, and EMS was called. But the thing about it is, is that these people, I have been out to let my dog out sometimes at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, and these people apparently are coming from the railroad track area and are walking down South Austin. And it's getting pretty scary when I have walked out in my back that one time of 4:00, and one day I had a man standing in my backyard. It's getting to be a problem when not, they're just not on the sidewalks walking through, but now they're out here at our back doors. And if something ain't going to get done, one of these homeowners is going to end up shooting somebody, and then they're going to be in trouble. And I just, like I said, I just think there's a lot of dilapidated property. That's especially over on Boddy and along that railroad, where these people, I think they must be harboring because they sip in and out so quickly. And maybe the city maybe needs to now, instead of even to the county about these dilapidated properties, maybe the city might need to think about, maybe we need to create a zoning issue because there's a lot of dilapidated, overgrown stuff, and these people are sipping in and out. And right down from you, Ms. Kate, I talked to Glasgow yesterday, and Tim was telling me he had it on camera because he had to do like I had to do. And my neighbor over there on the opposite side over on Austin, they had to put lights up. He's got them on camera where these people are coming up during the middle of the night, and there's a fire pit back there. He's got them where they're going in and picking up cigarette buds, and I guess they're smoking them. So like I said, we just need help with all these people that's roaming through these early morning hours because it's a safety issue. And like I said, so if someone's going to end up getting hurt.
Thank you so much, Mr. Baker, for sharing. And make sure you, that's why we have law enforcement. If you see any strangers, call them and let them handle it. And yes, we do wish we could get rid of some of these buildings also.
Mayor, I would like, Chief Fugge, can you, are you aware, can you fill us in a little bit more on the incident with the woman in the car?
No, I just texted my sergeant. I know that, I know we had an incident over the Friday night, but I don't know exactly what it was. It wasn't, it wasn't a report because it wasn't in my weekly.
Okay, right.
It may have been that she had a warrant or something. But I know that he called once in a while on people over there. We've been trying to keep an extra watch. We just can't be everywhere at one time.
I understand.
But I just texted my sergeant, someone needed to make sure they checked him on earlier this morning.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you, James. Our next item is on our West Nashville Commerce Park, to amend the covenants of the West Nashville Commerce Park. And at this time, I will turn it over to our town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. There are three property owners in the West Nashville Commerce Park, the town of Nashville, and Lee Balance with two of his LLCs. Lee wasn't able to be here this evening, but I do have him on speakerphone. What's on the agenda tonight is to consider some amendments to the covenants for the West Nashville Commerce Park. These were adopted in 2015, and they were likely taken from another town, and that probably given a whole lot of scrutiny at the time. Having since I've been here, had a chance to go through this, there are some things I'd like to recommend to the council to consider changing. And, you know, following the covenant, Section 20.07 prescribes the way in which the covenants get changed. And it starts with a declarant, which is the town of Nashville, calling a meeting. So we called a meeting 30 days in advance for tonight, and we have all the property owners here present. Lee, maybe you could acknowledge that you're present for this meeting?
Yes, I'm here by phone, and I appreciate you doing this. I had my second COVID shot yesterday, and like so many people, I had started having fevers this afternoon, and I just felt like you all didn't want me there with a fever. So thank you for doing this for me.
Okay, well, I'll quickly summarize what these changes are. In Section 5.2, there's a requirement in there that roof structures are to be screened from view. And, you know, this is an industrial park. I'm not quite sure. It would, it would be, in my opinion, a hardship for builders and companies that have pitched roofs to put parapet walls around the whole thing so you couldn't see anything of the sloped roof. And quite frankly, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me to have that requirement in an industrial park. So that's one. Also, Section 5.05 says fences cannot obstruct the view of property. Well, again, the whole point of a fence in most cases is to screen something. So it seems counterproductive to require screening for certain things, but then prohibit fences from doing that. So that's, that's the reason why I'm recommending that that be changed. In Section 6.01, the building setbacks are far more strict than what's required in our zoning ordinance for industrial zone property. And my recommendation is we match those setbacks. Instead of being 50 feet from the road, you have to be 25. Instead of being 30 feet from anything around the building, we reduce that down to the setbacks of 10, I believe is what the zoning ordinance says. Section 8 talks about the minimum frontage metal buildings. Right now, there's a requirement that the front of the building has to be completely clad in stone, brick, concrete, or glass, or other attractive surface. Again, to me, it's an industrial park, and if we had a 20% requirement on the front of those buildings for such decorative facades, I think that would be sufficient. And then there's also a requirement that on the lot itself, not more than 80% of the lot can be built upon. One thing you'll see is we get a little later in here, one of the requirements is that the minimum size of lots has to be two acres. Well, we violated that with the first lot we sold out there because it was only 2.16 acres. Anyway, continuing on, Section 10 then talks about replacing outside storage is prohibited in the front yard, and outside storage shall be screened from view by fencing, hedging, or landscaping. Replace that whole paragraph with, you know, the requirement that you can have outside storage, just not in the front yard, and that that storage has to be screened by fencing, landscaping, or hedging. Section 12.1 and 12.3 talks about exterior lighting. You know, these were, these were come up with prior to the advent of LED lighting. I'm recommending we change the high-pressure sodium and metal hay lighting to high-pressure sodium. I'm sorry, to LED lighting.
Right.
Yep. And then Section 1301, remove outside storage from the prohibited list of uses. Again, this, this is an industrial park, and you got to expect there's going to be some outside storage in an industrial park. I think it's unreasonable to prohibit outside storage in an industrial park. Then Section 16, 1, 2, and 4 all have references to minimum lot size of two acres. My recommendation is to change that to one. And then, yes.
Do we really want to reduce it down to one? Because in our, in our discussions with Gateway Partnership, all the, all the shell buildings, or most of the shell buildings we're talking about for 5,000 and above. So do, don't we want to leave it at two so we can put a 10,000 square foot building on it? Because if you put it down to one, there's no place out there to put a 10,000 square foot building.
Well, Lee's built one for Astera Labs. That's 10,000 square feet, and he can get the next addition on, and that, that's an acre and a half, basically.
Okay, acre and a half, but so, so we still would need two, two acres?
If you were going to do a 20,000 square foot building, yes, you probably want more than one acre. But, you know, for example, I guess I throw that out to show you that, you know, a 20,000 square foot building can fit on an acre that's a little more, or on a lot, a little more than an acre. The one that Lee has built for Astera Labs is 1.61 acres, I believe.
I just, I just don't want to cut an opportunity away from us when we looking for bigger, bigger shell buildings to put out there.
Well, you know, if you wanted to make it an acre and a half or acre and three quarters, wouldn't quite catch the first lot that was parceled off, which is 1.6, which is kind of ironic.
I'd want to leave it at two.
Well, I guess if you wanted to do one, there was the opportunity of doing something smaller on the one acre, or you could use two lots for a larger building. You'd just have to purchase that additional lot.
Nobody's asking for anything smaller.
One acre is small to me.
Okay. Lee, you.
When you lay out these buildings, they're going to be, there's going to be certain requirements that you have to have in terms of space and impervious soils, which is kind of, that's why we have Kevin to be able to place a building on, in existing lot and comply with all the requirements by the state and by the county. So we're kind of, we're going to comply with the codes that are there just because it's got to be approved. The site plan has to be approved by the county.
Lee, what are your thoughts on one acre or something a little larger than an acre? You know, I'm sensing some desire on the council's part to have it larger than an acre, and it makes good sense.
Okay. I don't have any problem with that. I'm trying to remember the second lot that I'm building on. Is it an acre and a half? I'm trying to remember. I don't have that in front of me.
I think it's 2.3.
2.3, okay. So that's, that's fine. I'm good. I'm okay with that.
So I guess I put it before the council for thoughts, comments on the minimum size of a lot.
I would like to offer that we keep it at two.
I'm good, okay.
And we would just have an exception to the covenants for the very first lot?
Would have to.
Grandfather, Dan.
Grandfather. Very good.
I'd like to talk about, are you finished going through? Okay, I'd like to talk about.
Now, what do we decide on this?
For keep it at two.
Keeping it two? Okay.
I know that this is an industrial area. However, is it truly a hardship to keep, you know, HVA systems, HVAC systems out of sight, or to keep things, you know, neat, clean, attractive? I do understand what you're saying, but as far as seeing the roof items and as far as like the facade of the building, if we only do 20% of it, that's almost nothing on the facade. I'd like for other things to be able to be developed there without having the unsightly industrial park. I'd like for it to be just as beautiful, neat, and clean as the rest of town.
20%, that's, that's almost sleazy.
So I would love to hear from Lee if it is truly a hardship to do the whole facade and also to screen any HVAC systems or any other structures that are on top of the roof from view from the road.
Well, typically, the metal buildings, pre-engineered metal buildings, you don't put any of your HVAC units on the roof. Typical HVAC units go on a roof that is a conventional steel building where you've got a parapet around the top, and the units sit down within that parapet. But the, all of the pre-engineered buildings that David and I have owned in Rocky Mount, all of them have their air conditioning units along the outside of the building but screened, so that there's no roof penetrations, no potentials for leaks, and it's just a cleaner look than to having parapet, which is very difficult to do if you've got a pre-engineered building, which is what you've got. Basically, that's, that's how we've sort of started that building there at Cook Road. Your industrial park out there by 64 with Atlantic Natural Foods, that's a whole different design and covenants there than they, than it is on Cook Road. But Cook Road sort of lends itself to the 10,000, 20,000 square foot pre-engineered buildings, which I think there's a demand for. And you don't want to outprice the market and get people to buy these buildings and start creating jobs. So I, I think it would be hard to have a parapet walls around a pre-engineered building. And you can set the HVAC units on the outside and just put some kind of screening that hides it from the road, and that that's easily done.
So what if we took out 5.02, which says that sloped or gabled roofs shall be screened with a parapet on all sides? We take that out so that you can have the sloped or gabled roofs, but we say that no structures are allowed on the roof or something like that? If they are, if, if structures are on the roof, then there have to be parapet screening?
Yeah, if you're going to put something on the roof, you would need a parapet wall to hide the, the units, absolutely.
Okay, so I would, I would be fine with that. That way, we can at least screen it if it is there and allow for the sloped roof or the gabled roof if it's not there.
Right. Because you may get somebody who comes in and wants to build something totally different than the pre-engineered building, and you would want, if they did something, wanted it on the roof, you would want to hide those units. So that would be a good suggestion.
And then as far as the facade of the building, if we could keep it so that the entire front has some sort of attractive.
At least 50%.
50%?
20% is just negligible.
I feel like that's the door.
That's offensive.
What does everyone else think on that one?
50%.
50%?
Also, the 10 feet from any side, going from 50 to 10, that's quite a move. 10 feet.
One of the things you need to remember is that the people who are going to be looking for a 10,000 square foot pre-engineered building is they're looking for the utility of the building, where you've got dock doors, drive-through doors. And typically, you would want, I like the idea of having that 20% so that when the tenant finally gets there, we then design a corner of the building where the employees come in and dress that corner up with glass or brick or stone or something when the tenant comes in. But typically, those 10,000 square foot buildings are for companies who are looking for the utility of the building, not an office per se. They, they need the utility part of the building, and they're not that interested in, you know, nice external structure. So the 20% that he's suggesting would keep it dressed up and looking nice, but allow people who need the utility of the building to also get in there and utilize the building.
Well, I understand that is the need of the people who are renting the building, but I guess I'm thinking of it from an aesthetic point of people passing by or setting up shop next to this. And so I would like to keep it at the 50% if it's not too much of a hardship.
What was that percentage?
50.
Well, that's a whole side, and if you've Well, that's a whole side, and if you've got the whole side-
50% of the front.
No, the front.
Just 50% of the front.
Did you catch that, Lee? It would be 50% of the front of the building. Didn't apply to the other three sides.
Okay. Okay.
Louise, you were making a point?
That was the point I made, about the 50%.
But as far as setbacks?
Yeah, but instead of 50, the 10 feet.
What would you suggest?
Half of that.
25?
Yeah, that would be better than 10 feet. It's just a sneeze.
Is that what the setbacks state in our, in our code for industrial?
Yes.
What you have here, the 10 feet?
Yeah. That mirrors what our zoning ordinance is for, for industrial property.
What mirrors 10?
The 10.
The 10 mirrors our-
Right, what our current ordinance is.
For side and rear yard setbacks on a building in the I-1 zoning district.
It is, it is right on top of each other.
It is. I mean, we might want to look at that in a global manner, where we've actually fixed the ordinance to change that, instead of just holding one area accountable to something greater.
But, I mean, we could have it greater for the covenants, you know? Again, you're looking at something that you want to be a showcase. I understand that. The building that's out there right now does not meet the side yard and rear yard setbacks of these covenants presently. It's a violation of those.
We would like to say it with grandfather.
So, what is everyone comfortable as far as setbacks? Did you want to do like a 25 or?
Half of 50 sounds good.
So, 25 for side and rear.
Right.
Lee, were you able to catch that?
Yeah. But that's greater than what your, your code calls for, for industrial.
It is.
I think everyone's thinking we might have to change what our, our current code says.
Maybe a tax amendment for the zoning ordinance.
In 10.01, where we talk about outside storage is prohibited in the front yard, and then outside storage shall be screened from view by fencing, hedging, or landscaping. So, if that happens in the back of the building, I would like that to be fencing, hedging, or landscaping that's approved by us if that would be amenable. Something that we can approve and agree on as far as appropriately screening whatever HVAC system or outside storage, or whatever it may be.
Yeah, I think the way these covenants are written, ultimately, the declarant, which is the town, has final say on the site plan.
Okay.
You're allowed to grant variances to that, from what I read in there.
Well, if the, if the storage in the very back, where it's not in plain view of the general public riding by, I don't see where that would create so much of a problem. But if it's, if you could see it from any approach to the building, then yes, I think it needs to be-
I guess it depends on how the building is situated and what's in the back.
Right. And where they position this stuff.
And are we, are we permitting it also on the sides of the building?
There's no outside storage, period.
Okay, but here we say outside storage is prohibited in the front yard, and then we say outside storage shall be screened from view by fencing, hedging, or landscaping, which presumes that you would be able to do it on the other three sides.
Correct. The way I have it proposed.
The way that it's changed.
Yes.
Right.
The way it's proposed, the change. So, if you had it on the side or the back, it would have to be fenced and screened.
Right. So, then I would like to approve that if you're going to be able to see it from coming in.
And I don't go for none being in the front.
Yes.
No.
Got that, Randy?
I do.
Okay.
That was all I was thinking.
Anybody else?
That 80% in 8.03, the footprint of the building would be 80% of the building side.
That means you could use 80% of the lot to build structures on.
So, I guess as long as your setbacks are met-
Yes.
-you can use the entirety of the lot for structures.
So, there's a couple, there's a couple measurements that that would come into play there, provided you can meet your setbacks, which you guys would like to see, you know, 25 on side and rear.
Any other things you would like to see with this?
If not, might I suggest that we make these changes and bring it back at the next council meeting, and we can continue this meeting of the declarations, as long as we know Lee's available via phone, if he can't come in person.
Sure. I'm okay.
That would be at the April 4th meeting, then we would have it back on the agenda. So-
I'll agree with that.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, if you would, if there would be a motion to continue this declaration meeting until the April 4th council meeting.
Is there a second?
Any second.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Lee, our, our meeting's over.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Lee.
Our next item on our agenda is 6B. No, it's not. 6A. And that's the partial street closing of West M Street and North Court Street. And at the council's meeting on February 2nd, the council voted to close West M Street between Drake Street and Body Street and a 140-foot portion of North Court Street from West M Street North, provided Nash County agrees to the following conditions: to incur the cost of converting Drake Street to a two-way street and deed ownership of the closed street back to the town if in the future they are no longer needed for the Nash County Detention Center. And this item is in our agenda for the, the county council was meeting Monday to decide in agreement upon this, and they did agree, but they got us nothing in writing. And so, what is your desire, since we have nothing in writing?
We table it until we get something in writing.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
We will table this until we get in writing their commitment to us. Our next item on our agenda is our crane carrier's side loaded garbage truck. And Randy, I'm going to let you talk to us about that precious truck. Bless its heart.
As you guys know, it's seen better days. The engine, the engine needs to be overhauled, and, you know, it's, it's almost a 12-year-old truck. It's been run hard four days a week, every week since we've had it in 2010. It certainly doesn't owe us any. We've got our money out of it and then some. I just, you know, it's going to cost between 20 and 24,000 to put a different engine in it, and I don't just, I don't feel as if it's worth it. And we bought the backup truck out of Pennsylvania late last year. The guys are running with that right now, and it's working. Our new truck is going to be here at the end of April. You know, this truck is sitting up in Gold Rock at the repair place, still full of garbage, going on eight weeks now. Thing's got to be ripe, to say the least. And, you know, they don't want it. I, you know, Kevin and Lee came up with the idea, well, let's just take them the title and sign it over to them. They don't want it. You know, we can't dispose of personal property that way anyway, but the state of North Carolina says we can, the council can authorize the sale by private sale, which basically you set a minimum price, and in this case, what I'm recommending is the scrap price, you know, called around to the junkyards, and they buy vehicles by the pound. This is a 65,000 gross vehicle weight at $5 per hundred. It'd bring about $3,100. Now, having said that, I think with a little effort on, on the staff's part, we can find companies that, that buy and deal and use garbage truck packers and apparatuses who may be interested in that packer. You know, last year, we, we put a new bottom in it at the cost of about $28,000, and that part of the truck works fine. But, you know, the, the engine on the truck is gone, the chassis doesn't have much value at all. But if we could get somebody interested in that, and, you know, the resolution that I prepared for the council to consider tonight on the disposition of this piece of equipment has in there for the town manager to negotiate with such company to try and get as much money as possible out of that. So, I guess I open the floor to the council and invite your discussion on whether or not you want to proceed with repairing that engine and, and making it operable again, and then seeing if we could sell it then.
That truck is our third line truck right now, right? If it was running, it would be our third truck.
Well, if it was running, the guys, the guys would still be using it, no doubt, because that crane carrier chassis has a much bigger cockpit and cab on it than the, than the International that the backup truck we bought. So, it's easier to get in and out, and you don't have to step as high. It's got the, it's got the drop-down frame on it. So, if it did run, Larry, yes, they would still use it until the new truck comes.
Until the new truck comes?
Yes.
Didn't it?
I would recommend, once the new truck gets here, even if that truck does run, to keep it as a spare.
Well, we've got to put an engine in to keep it a spare.
Yes.
We, I guess this is one of the situations, we don't put so much money in it. At some point, we've got to cut our losses. But I hate for our losses to come down to $3,100. I would hope that you and Lee, Lee, you and Lee could put your feelings out and see, because if somebody somewhere that would appreciate getting that, that paper, even, even without an engine in it, and I think that's well over $3,100 worth of value.
I agree.
So, I would, I would suggest that we go that route before we take it to the scrapyard and see what we can get out of it. That's my proposal.
Is that a motion?
That you give as much money for it as you possibly can.
Yeah, as much as we can, and don't let anybody know the scrap bag.
And that's a motion.
Don't let them know the scrap bag is $3,100.
That's an order.
I moved, I moved that we are-
Do resolution 09.
There's been a motion that we approve resolution 2021-09. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
These garbage trucks are about to kill us.
But we'll be getting a new one soon. The next item on our agenda is review and approve rental rules and of amending the fee schedule to include rental rates for the recreation center. Okay, Colleen?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. So, as you know, we've got a nice new recreation center that we opened up yesterday. We're excited to have some programs starting back up and have a busy spring there. One of the services that we can provide there is allowing the public to rent that space when it's not being used for programs for events such as baby showers, birthday parties, meetings, et cetera. And so, after meeting with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and calling around to different recreation departments in the area, we developed a set of rules that we thought covered all of our bases for that rec center. And I did give you a new copy today with some changes from Councilmember Burns that she had sent me yesterday. And then, the other thing that we discussed for that would be a rental rate for that facility. And again, I called around to some other rec departments and asked about facilities they have that are similar in size. Those rates range anywhere from $35 to $75 per hour, and for a non-resident rate, it's anywhere to 15 to $35 more per hour for those. So, we're asking that you review these rules, make any recommended changes that you see, and then allow us to amend the fee schedule to allow for that.
Colleen, a question. How did you come at the $25 per hour for residents, for hours, seeing as it says that the research you did said it was between 35 and 75 in the others? How did you arrive at the 25?
What we were trying to do with that is determine what a break-even cost would be. We didn't want the town to lose any money having this, so we're going to have to pay a part-time person to be at that building. Obviously, we've got, you know, all of our bills for that facility being used. So, that's how we come up with that price. I wouldn't recommend going any lower than that, but certainly if the council wants to go higher than that, you certainly can.
The Parks and Rec Board just wanted to have another great amenity for the town residents, to be able to utilize something like this for baby showers and little birthday parties. But as he said, not have it cost the town anything additional, so pretty much break-even. And they were open to making a slight profit, but didn't want to, they figured it would deter people from actually doing it if we went too high and be less of a benefit to the community. But they're definitely open to other numbers if you haven't.
Any other comments?
And the minimum is two hours, minimum.
Yes, sir.
Two hours, right?
Yes, sir.
So, it'll be $50.
Correct.
All the items that are highlighted in yellow, those were the changes that you made.
So, go ahead.
I move to approve.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we approve our Nashville Recreation Center rules summary, and thank you so much, Colleen.
Thank you.
Our next item on our agenda is, let's see, get my stuff in order here. 7B, which is Eastern Avenue Water and Sewer Upgrades. And if you remember, in June 2020, the town of Nashville was informed by the North Carolina Department of Transportation that it would be reconstructing the town's water main on the north side of Eastern Avenue between, is that Kamla Road or Red Oak Road? And so, they gave us a price, and Randy, would you like to share this with us? I'm sure you've read it and reviewed it.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor.
Well, at the time, we just, the council discussed it, since they were going to be replacing the water main anyway, we thought, well, what would it cost to go from a 12-inch to a 16? Now, that whole line isn't 16-inch. It's 16 from Kamla to Regency Drive, and then from Regency Drive to Red Oak Road, it is a 12-inch. That's, that's the portion we asked for a price. And they came back at that time at 136,000. We'd also, you know, part of this project is to, the DOT, at the DOT's expense, is installing a sanitary sewer line that, when they're finished, is going to be given to the town to own and maintain afterwards. And it goes from the Regency Lift Station, which is kind of in line with the street just east of, of Walmart there. I can't remember the name of that right offhand. But it, it'll go out to Kamla Road, too, so that Glover's Buildings out there, which have septic tanks, all those are in the front of the buildings, and they're going to be taken out as part of this road widening project, so they have to make them whole. And it was less expensive, I believe, for them to build the sewer line and hook them up than it was to try and put septic systems back in for those buildings. So, anyway, we asked for, since that sewer line's going to be on the south side of Eastern Avenue, we asked for a price to put two crossings under Eastern Avenue to get to the north side. So, if there's any development on the north side, we wouldn't have the expense of jack and bore and connecting to it. And that, that came back, that, that price came back at 109,000. And at that time, the council said, yes, give, give them the, the word that we will do that. Well, fast forward to now, we got revised numbers for that. The upsizing on the water main is now going to be 228,000, which is a $92,000 increase, and those two sewer crossings are going to increase to almost 140,000, which is about a $30,000 increase. So, you know, I told the DOT that, yeah, I got to take this back to the council, and we have to re, you guys have to discuss this over again.
50% inquiries. But I mean, the sewer underwater.
Randy, the development that's going over behind Walmart, where would they tie, where would they tie into the sewer system at?
Well, right now, they, oh, you mean on, on East Point Avenue?
Right.
There, there is a sewer line on East Point Avenue, and that drains to the Regency Lift Station.
It goes to the Regency-
So, Bradford Place, the new sub- So Bradford Place, the new subdivision behind Food Line, is going to drain to Regency Lift Station.
The way I'm looking at it, from Red Oak Road to the lift station in Regency, there's not going to be anything else going into that twelve-inch main.
There's a few lots right there by Four Seasons that could have development on them.
But it could handle that as it is right now. Unless everybody flushes at the same time, I don't think we have a backup there.
Well, yeah, the sewer is sufficient. That lift station, at some point, if development continues, may have to be upgraded. Though the water main, if you're referring to the water main, that twelve-inch water main is adequate to serve everything along Eastern Avenue right now, and what could come there in the future.
Right.
You know, the only reason we thought it'd be a good idea maybe to upgrade that is because of all the other utilities that are in that same route. And if we ever wanted to upgrade it, upsize it in the future, it probably would be cost prohibitive.
What kind of, what kind of development would need to occur to justify an upgrade in the future?
It'd have to be something really big.
Something really big, right? And then I'm thinking, if it's really big, then it would be beneficial to the really big person that's bringing the really big thing in. They would absorb that cost.
Like a motel.
Right.
Right.
Well, you could easily serve a motel on the twelve-inch water line.
It could still serve a motel.
Now, if we were to, from Red Oak Road, go north along Red Oak Road, you know, north of town, out to First Street Extension, where we do have another water main and loop that, there potentially could be large water users out that way. But again, if we extend a twelve-inch main up Red Oak Road and loop it with the twelve-inch main that's already on First Street Extension, it comes from two different directions. And I just don't see where we would be disadvantaged by not doing this. Again, we only asked for the price since they were replacing the main anyway, thinking, well, jeez, how much could it cost to go from twelve-inch pipe to a sixteen-inch pipe?
I don't think a sixty-eight percent increase.
Plus, now, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Plus, we have some places that we're going to have to give attention to.
Yes.
That are not working efficiently.
That exist and have current problems.
Right.
I would go along with putting those cutouts to go underneath to the...
Right, that's the part that I wanted to talk about, the cross.
I'd go along with the crossroads, because we want them to have their sewer, because they're going to lose their septic tank. They have a sewer hookup from the other side, but from Red Oak Road to the lift station, basically what it is, I don't see a sixty-eight percent increase. That's too much to try to bite off.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to do that.
Of those two sewer crossings, when we talked about this last, there was only one the town was going to pay for, and that would have been the one for Woda Copper, for the workforce housing. They didn't get their workforce housing credits granted to them. I talked to that Dennis Blackburn last week, and he's not reapplying for FY21, or for calendar year 2021, but he wants to again for 2022. David Rose, at that time, was the other sewer crossing, and he was willing to pay for that himself. He's not at this price.
So if we did one sewer crossing, I'm just thinking of what the future development is going to look like next to Regency. I feel like we have to set something up to set that area up for success.
But you got, you got a sixteen-inch main from Regency out to Kamla, out to the traffic place.
But Kate, I think you're talking sewer-wise.
I'm talking about the sewer crossing, yeah, going across.
Yeah, I'm with the sewer crossing, going across, but I'm talking about...
Just not the increase in the pipe size, right.
Let's go from Regency to...
Randy, that area next to Four Seasons, is that the staging area for all of this?
It is.
Yes.
It is.
A lot of people asked what was going to be built there.
Yeah, I've had lots of conversations.
There've been some rumors. I won't repeat them. People get excited about them.
That's right.
All they're doing is, are the jack and bores underneath Eastern Avenue right now to replace some of the water lines that are going to be taken out that exist already for, and that's the route for the new ones.
So how expensive would it be come 2022 for, like, a Woda Cooper to then have to put in those crossings?
I don't know if it'd be much more than what they're quoting us right now.
Okay.
I really don't.
It's hard to believe they go up that much higher.
The costs are going up, and we experienced that with the sewer outfall line. From the time that we started negotiating that, with the time it was finished, it went up over six hundred thousand dollars. So we experienced that.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to waste money and spend it where we don't need it, but I also don't want to look back two or three years from now and say, gosh, why didn't we do it then? Because now no one can do anything here.
The apartment complex that was coming out between Regency and John Dear Place, is that still on the books?
No.
They've bailed completely out of that.
He's, the developers are planning to reapply, what he told me, for those workforce housing credits in the calendar year 2022.
Oh, okay.
And he still likes that location. You know, the reason he liked the location is because, as a census track, building there generated the most points on a workforce housing application because of its demographics.
If there's any serious development, the developers can incur the cost.
That's always an option, yes. But typically, when you get an economic development prospect, you guys know the game. They always look for incentives, and, you know, where towns and counties are able to help typically is with the infrastructure, water and sewer.
So what you're saying, as far as incentives, is that we'd still be on the hook to pay for this, even with a larger developer coming in?
It's likely, if you had an economic development prospect out there, they would ask for something, and it's easiest for towns to do infrastructure.
So what are your thoughts?
They have a timeline.
They want to, yes, they are ordering pipe next week. So are we ordering sixteen-inch pipe, or are we ordering twelve?
I think the water is out for me. The increase just doesn't make sense. But the sewer crossing is a maybe.
I'm for the sewer crossing, because we're taking the sewer and stuff away from them.
The nice thing about this project is we're getting a nearly one-million-dollar sewer extension free.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts, Lynn?
I would move that we put, that we go ahead with the sewer crossing, but just, let's just forego the other.
Is that two or one?
Two.
So we're looking at a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand seven seventy-four.
But now, hold on. You said that the two we were looking at, one of them, Rose, was going to be paying for, correct? But now he doesn't want to at this price?
Correct.
So...
Maybe you do one and split it.
Right.
We need to negotiate.
Right. If, you know, if he was willing to go for that previous price, then he can pay the previous price, and we'll pay the difference.
Lynn, what are your thoughts?
I agree with, yeah, I agree. We need some skin in it.
I withdraw my motion.
So do I hear another motion, if he withdraws his motion?
I move that you negotiate with the developer.
On the sewer crossing. But the water upgrade is out.
Is out.
Okay.
Do I hear a second to Louise's?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. It's amazing how quickly things double in price.
I thought it was a misprint.
But Larry, we've experienced this before with the sewer outfall line.
It always happens.
Six hundred thousand dollars.
It always happens this way.
That's why I would hate, for three years from now, we get a real good project, but it just doesn't make sense for them to do it, because it costs us too much.
Do you have anything else? Okay, any comments from the council? Kate?
Not tonight.
Louise?
No.
Lynn? Larry?
Not tonight, Mayor.
If not, we thank those of you that came for coming, and we thank you so much to our staff members that are here. And do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So may.
Wait.
I have one question. What's, do you have any update on the site for our future fire station? Any update?
That's right.
And I'm sorry.
March fifteenth, lined up a meeting with the mayor and Larry, our economic development liaison, to meet with the corporate exec of Clayton Homes in regard to that property. So after that meeting, I'm hoping to have something very positive to report, so...
So he wants to meet with us to negotiate what we've already have on the table?
No, I, you know, what I'm hearing from the plant manager coming back down from the corporate execs, the property appraised for four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, they're willing to sell it to the town for whatever the cost of the new driveway is, and the last numbers I heard on that are about sixty-eight thousand. And they're thinking the discounted difference between what the land appraised for and what we're, what they're, at this point, agreeable to sell it to us, might be worthy of some economic incentive for Clayton Homes. So that's the purpose of the meeting. I mean, we can't make any decisions. We can only bring back a report to the full council of what comes out of that.
All right.
Okay, thank you so very much. And if there are no other comments, our March second council meeting is now adjourned. Did I hear, we've got a person... Okay. Okay. Meeting is adjourned.